So anyway, what happened last year?
You know, we grow the fastest growing, highest quality timber in the world. And when you look at the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest, it's the most diverse, the most unique, the most wild, and should be the most productive. And we've had three major fires, Mike, here, as you know, in the last 20, 22 years. And it's just been devastating for our ecosystem, for our timber harvest, for water and air quality, wildlife habitat. The latest, the Chetco Bar Fire, started on July 12th, just a small fire. And as you know, it ultimately burned 191,000 acres, almost a fifth of total acreage of our county here, Currie County, corner of southwest Oregon. It cost $70 million to fight. We have, we're dealing with the Forest Service right now on how to manage the burned timber salvage harvest, and things are moving slow. The environmental process, the NEPA process is, certainly is predictable roadblocks. And so we're trying to use the emergency situation declaration to accelerate that, at least a reasonable percentage of that timber to be removed in the next year or so before it ultimately becomes invaluable with no value because of just the natural decomposition. Some of it's in the light succession reserve, which are larger trees. They are severely burnt. Also, as you know, it's low, moderate, and severe. And there's some controversy there with the bear report, the soil as well, suffering various degrees of burn. And without harvesting some of those trees, our fire risk goes up. Each one potentially is a stick of dynamite. And we've had a very mild winter. Surprisingly, we're predicting a little bit more of a coarse winter, and it's been spring-like for a good portion of the five major months of our winter. So we're looking at a, here it is, at the end of March, we're looking at a potentially a very additional severe fire season. So what that adds up to is we're at about 7% of the 170,000 acres, 191,000 counting the private timber that was lost, but 170,000 acres of public lands that went up in smoke, mostly burnt either moderate or severe. It's a very small percentage. And of course, the movement is no additional roads. What this has done to our recreation, our visitor programs, the list goes on and on. It's 80% of the Chetco watershed, so that's my water source for the communities of Brookings and Harbor. And of course, if you don't harvest it, we don't have money for reforestation. So not only did we lose this incredibly valuable timber that, you know, as you also know, everything good comes from the forest, especially in Oregon. It's the advantage that no one else in this country has in terms of renewable resource. Visitors that come here, they're wondering if, gosh, is August just going to be an automatic smoke month for Oregon, at least on the western part, or perhaps the entire state? And so as we've lost that beautiful sacred part of our national forest here, the Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest, we're looking at, not only do we, the Forest Service doesn't have the proper resources and funding to reforest, rehabilitate, and repair. We, just a little side note, we have a shortage of seedlings. In fact, there may not be any adequate availability at all. So that's a big issue.
Explain seedlings.
Just normal Douglas fir seedlings.
Oh, seedlings, okay.
Yeah, I probably didn't say it very well. So that is a big concern. As we look at the future, how, you know, we just squandered 16 years between the Biscuit and the Chetco Bar Fire on 90,000 that was reburned. So these are not normal fires. Everybody, the harvest companies, certainly most of the foresters I know, they are not in any way opposed to natural or normal burn cycles. But what we're having here, where it got within five miles of Brookings, it went 18 miles, originally started 23 miles from Brookings, went 18 miles in 72 hours. And it was just a grace of God that it did a right turn when it got within about 4.9 miles of Brookings, and it headed north, the winds died down. I often joke to my friends that the grown-up, the old rock band Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, I'm gonna write a book someday, says Curry Winds &amp; Fire. And so, you know, it's just...
You're talking about the Chetco Effect?
The Chetco Effect, yes. And it is something that we knew about. We certainly know more about it now. But it is, it's something that we really have to be on our toes with. And this, the forests are so dense here, have not been because we haven't had reasonable harvest over the last 20, 25 years, in my view. And I think there's plenty of data and documents to back that claim up. So the forests are growing out of control. And in that, not only do we lose our watershed and our wildlife and fish habitat, of course, we compound the problem by destroying the wildlife through just, forgive me, but just sheer incineration. So I hope I'm making sense here. It's the healing process, we're still mourning, you know? We're still cycling all this. We're still worried about our communities, what could happen again in 2018, or maybe it's going to be 2019. Obviously, we don't know for sure. But we know another major fire is coming, and we gotta do our best to prepare. And the way to do that is to remove as much of the fuel for mega fires as we possibly can, obviously. As well, everyone I know wants to do that responsibly. They want to create and prevent soil erosion. That goes without saying. But this is a timber community, and it is how we support our schools. It's how we support our law enforcement. It grows, thank the good Lord, it grows so fast here. It's just really illogical not to take advantage of that and manage it well. Also, as you probably know, between Oregon and Washington, those two states, there's almost seven and a half million acres of wilderness. Nobody I know is opposed to that either, as well. But sometimes you look at those wilderness areas, you think, okay, is that an excuse not to properly manage? We have the responsibility, even the positive burden, if you will, to manage every part of our natural resources. And frankly, Mike, we're not doing that. And I think that the documentation, again, the, we know that science is continually changing. There is a fringe of the environmental movement out there that wants no harvest, that cutting down a tree is wrong, even a second growth. And that is, that is just simply terribly bad for Oregon. It's a big garden that needs to be properly tended to, weeded. You know, it's something that we can do, it's something we have to do. And if we don't harvest, again, we're not, we're not going to have the resources and, of course, the funding to properly rehab the forest. And that's the responsibility we have for the generations to follow. It can't just be something that we tout as a popular thing to say. We have to be fully committed to that. Most of the other counties that I'm familiar with, the commissioners, the timber companies, logging companies, private timber, they're equally committed to that. First of all, it's law, but it's what they want to do to maintain. All we're promoting is a normal, acceptable, sustained annual yield. In Oregon, I think the people are starting to catch on it, even in the metropolitan areas.
You brought up several points that I'd like to address a little bit here. I've been dealing with this forever on the wood products side. So including the beginning of the spotted owl. And one of the things that you mentioned as far as, we kind of started locking up with Clinton administration our national forest because of the spotted owl, particularly in the western half of Oregon. And I'm just curious, what is your thoughts on that? As far as we lock those up, what does it cost us in revenue and in resources because of that one listing? Any, I mean, we're talking in the billions, as far as I can estimate.
Well, I think a little bit related to that, we're seeing flatbed 18-wheelers full of Canadian plywood headed down to Santa Rosa. Thank God those folks are getting some badly needed support and materials. And, you know, certainly their healing process has begun. We didn't lose any lives here, and we're incredibly thankful for that. We did lose about 20 structures, seven or eight homes total. As it relates to the spotted owl, the best thing for the spotted owl is good forest management, not to incinerate them on their nest. I get a little bit passionate about this because it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that literally cougars, deer, raccoons, the national statistics on a fire of this magnitude is it's up to four, excuse me, about 18 four-legged critters per acre die. Now, that can just be a lizard, but it can also be an elk. It can also be a cougar, bobcat, raccoon, doesn't matter. You fill in the blanks. What does a cougar do, if you just want to use that species for one example? When they don't know what to do, they climb a tree. Well, they burn to death in the tree. I can show you pictures. And so the 5%, or maybe less than 10% of the environmental friends that want to tell us that this is acceptable, indirectly or directly, to see this much devastation. I mean, if you go up on the ridge and look east, you can see, you can almost see to, on a clear day, of course, you can almost see to the Currie County-Josephine County line. And so it's just heartbreaking. How do you explain to your kids, your school-aged children, you know, that, well, the fire is somehow, that's okay? That's not, that's not good management? So yes, I don't know. And you mentioned something else interesting there that, and I think it relates to the spotted owl and other species that we're concerned about, and should be, is the Northwest Forest Plan. Way overdue, Mike, for an update. And so I'm running with people a lot smarter than me that are tuned into that. Several, well, I don't want to say several, but two or three in particular I know that went through the Biscuit Fire and saw the devastation, and were not learning from those lessons. And it's just unacceptable. It just can't continue on. And I had one friend say, hey, we don't get control of this. We're going to be able to rent nothing here but dune buggies because there won't be any rivers left, there won't be any fish left, there'll be just sand. So I know that sounds a little, maybe a little hoaxy, but, you know, it's, it opens your eyes a little bit to the devastation. And I've got tons of pictures here that, I mean, the people in this community have, they're angry, they're controlled, they're sorrowful, they're concerned, and they want it fixed. And they don't want the radical environmental approach anymore. They believe that common sense to tell you the best way to save the owl is to have a forest that's cleared so they can navigate to get the rats. Their diet. If there's tons of trees and brush naturally, they're not going to be able to navigate very well. And so, you know, that's just one of many responsibilities we have, but this is doable. And I want to get back to the Oregon advantage. Nobody grows trees like we do, not even in Canada, not even in Russia. You know, Russia's climate is so cold where they grow the big trees, and they're much slower growing than what we have. Now, they may have a little different argument, but the Douglas fir species, there's no other tree like it. And, you know, this little corner of Oregon, the northern, the northwest corner of California, they grow the redwoods and the Douglas fir. I mean, there's just nothing grows better. You know, the mills can't take old growth anymore. I mean, nothing more essentially above 24 inches, so they're geared up. And I want my mills in Oregon to have a good log supply, and that's my responsibility. That's government's responsibility, that's state government's responsibility. I see some movement. I don't see any real changes yet in the Forest Service. I want to give them a chance right now. The Forest Service is in a total mess. I mean, we had a new, presumably good guy, the new chief that took over. Now he's gone, and so there's just a lot of indecision. I think the problems can be solved though, and we've got to get, we've got to get started yesterday, in my opinion.
Yeah, you mentioned something else too. As far as the Forest Service, we hear, people I've talked to said, well, they're out working, they're out laying out timber sales, et cetera. They still have to deal with NEPA.
Yes.
And what the environmentalists, and covering this stuff for years and years, I had one ranger on the Ochko National Forest explain to me, he said, the real purpose of NEPA was to prevent the Forest Service from doing anything. There are so many rules and regulations that contradict themselves that if you're compliant on one section, you're out of compliance on the next. And so what do you think we need to do as far as Congress is concerned in taking care of NEPA?
When you look at what's going on in the West, in the western United States, it doesn't really matter which state it is. The best managed timber is a private timber because they're responsible to the owners. And so they do their job. I've known foresters my entire life, and their life was designed, they're wired, for lack of a better term, because they are enthused in life to grow big, beautiful forests. They love the wilderness, they understand growing trees, they understand management. And I could go into a lot of detail, and that'll spare you for now unless you have specific questions. But at the national level, when you look at what's going on in the West and our rural way of life, struggling, we deserve local control, at least a seat at the table. That doesn't mean we're going to take over, certainly not, take over firefighting, although State of Oregon, Oregon Department of Forestry has a tremendous record of fighting fires. They'll go way out of their way to keep them under 10 acres, and 90% of them, they do. But the word that needs to come down, the directions that need to come down at the national level, is we're going to grow forest. And as part of that moldable use is sustain yield to keep logs in our mills and to keep people working. There's got to be a demand for labor, you know? And when there's a demand for labor, wages go up, families succeed, schools are improved, we have good law enforcement. I mean, that all goes without saying. And another example I could give you, Mike, just on the 18 ONC counties, Association of ONC Counties, we're logging through the BLM right now, harvesting less than 300 million acres, okay, in those 18 counties, per year. It's growing by 1.2 million acres every year, excuse me, I'm sorry, 1.2 million board feet. And so we're logging, we're harvesting, almost irresponsibly because that's what we're restricted to, one-third, less than a third of what is actually growing. What's the recipe there? The recipe without that management, by just simply saying, through the NEPA process that you reference, we're not doing our job. And so some mills have to have trees come out of, you know, Idaho or, you know, Washington to Oregon, and here we grow it right here. I mean, you can look at Rough and Ready in Cave Junction. What a sad story. The biggest employer now in Cave Junction is Dutch Brothers. It's maddening, and we need them all, we need the balance, we need the diversity. And I'm not saying that's the only reason, I don't care, except the part as a public official, my part in doing everything I can to get them logs. You know, our mills are pretty healthy now in Roseburg and Currie County, and even Coos Bay. But they have a lot of business issues in transportation costs and labor issues and the taxes that they pay the state, et cetera. So, you know, it's not an easy job to be in, you know, in the mill business. And I hate to say it, but I think we, it'd be a lot of years, would be a lot of years before we would see another mill constructed because it's literally, as you know, into the million dollars, millions of dollars to build a new. So the NEPA process, the people I run with, they're environmentalists, they wouldn't want to do away with NEPA. They just want to see it in a wise, prudent, productive way, where everybody works together and it's not, you do it. I mean, I haven't seen since this fire, Mike, the radical environmentalists, and I hate to use that term, but I think it's fair and accurate, come to the table and say, you know, I will negotiate a little bit here and there. And I think you got a point, but I've got a really, this LSR, or, you know, but we're not even actually asking about the wilderness area, you know? I mean, it's, even though it's ruined, you know, Currie County could brag about the Calmy Opus Wilderness, but not for another 50 years will there be anything to brag about. It's just absolutely disheartening. Hopefully, I'm not overstating it or scaring people off, but the word, the word has to, the truth has to be promoted, it's that simple. I believe, my heart, soul, and mind.
Well, one of the things that has borne out over history is that we don't hear much from the environmental community until timber sales come to the table. Then the lawsuits follow to block. And I've interviewed people in numerous environmental groups, some that only have one or two people in them, who file these lawsuits that just fling them up against the wall to find something that might stick so they can block or hinder. And they know that if they block that timber sale for two and a half years, the wood value is gone.
And they know that?
They know that.
That's what happened to Biscuit.
Yeah.
And that's why some of the local people here that went through that process responsibly, respectfully so, are so frustrated and determined they're not going to let it happen again. And yet, here it is, April, almost April, and here's where we sit. No, the radical environmental movement, that group, is actually doubling down because if they don't, they know, they're responsible for this fire. They're responsible for the Forest Service policies because they, just reference the MIST principle, minimum, minimum impact suppression tactics when they fight a fire, means we're going to monitor. Well, I almost lost Brookings, and I don't care if I have to stand on the state Capitol rotunda or whatever, and if I have to stand alone. We have to reduce the odds, and here it is, a beautiful day like this. We're not doing our job. We're not warning people, I mean, we're trying to warn people, but we're so caught up in just the minutia of simple, common sense, logical approach to managing this timber. And so, yes, they're doubling down, and I'm holding them responsible. They've had their way for 35 years. Back to your question about the spotted owl. I don't know anybody that doesn't want to protect the spotted owl, me included. I raised my family in the Rogue River wilderness, no roads. So I have a respect and an endearing absolute love for what we have here in Oregon. But, you know, when it gets over and above, we're, common sense, then, yes, we have to push back, and I don't think we have any choice.
Forest Service, on the salvage sales that they're proposing, have they given any indication of when they might put those up for sale?
Yes, they're, and I'm going to give them credit on that. I think they're, even some young guys here, just take Gold Beach for example. I mean, there's some really dedicated, sharp people that we have here that I'm thankful for, they have families, you know, which that's irrelevant. But, you know, it's motivating me to encourage them, and they want, they're really working as hard as they can to have that date be June 1, Mike.
June 1.
And I'm nudging them as hard as I can for 1st of May, you know, a month from now, or maybe middle of May. But, you know, we're not getting a lot of help from the regional area. You know, there's some, I'll let that go as far as comment, but it gets back to...
Regions fix.
Yes, but, you know, they are subjected to continual lawsuits and fairness to the Forest Service, and so they do this dance. Sometimes they use that to their advantage, you know, they drive, I'm sorry, they drive around brand-new rigs, you know, drive around circles on the roads that they're trying to close my citizens off of. And, I mean, that's not, that's not the rule, but it is sometimes. That's what kind of rubs the taxpayers the wrong way. They're saying, you won't let us, you won't manage well, you won't let us in, you won't let us have timber sales, you won't put the fires out, you know, the let it burn policy, I can argue that all day long. And then after it burns, you know, we're lucky we don't lose somebody in the process. I mean, you look at the, just look at, I'm veering off a little bit here, but you just look at the fuel load in the California fires compared to what we have here. I mean, it's not even one one-hundredth. That was brush that burnt, that cost those homes to go. I mean, it really, essentially, wasn't a lot of trees, not like we have here. And so...
Well, one of the precepts, it seems, from either the Forest Service or environmentalists in the Forest Service and pushing the Forest Service is that we just kind of take roads out of existence, eventually we put a gate up, and then we call that wilderness land.
So we don't have to manage it?
We don't have to manage it, and it prevents us from having to deal with it as far as whatever, wildlife, wildfires. Then all of a sudden, it's pseudo-wilderness lands. Have you seen that happening here?
Well, and it's growing, and what they'll do is they'll take a wilderness research study area, and that basically just closes it off. I think what you're saying indefinitely there. Once you put a gate on, the gates don't come down. So if I want to take my grandkids up in the hills, up to a ridge, and, you know, get up a whatever buit or, you know, some of the areas back there, I mean, I am, my access is not going to be very good, and that's not why we live here. And that's not the idea behind, you know, the wilderness areas, to lock everybody out and then burn it up. I mean, I just, I don't know how else to characterize it. So, yeah, I think you said it.
I'm going to hold it off here, we're going to change a memory stick here. What do we need to do in our national forest? These fires have grown in intensity, severity, and complexity over the last 20 years. They just get bigger and bigger, and cost more and more. What's the answer?
The answer is local control. The answer is the states, the 11 western states getting involved in forest management. We've got to bring people together that otherwise may not come together. There, when you, when you do have that roundtable discussion and you update the Northwest Forest Plan, it's 25 years old now, give or take. And so at the national level, it's a fight to protect incredibly important and valuable resources, not just Oregon. We have the International Track and Field Competition in Eugene in 2021. And so we need to manage well now. We have people getting ill from the smoke. We have, we have mills that are absolutely needing to have a sustainable amount of timber available, logs available for their production. And we need to be able to compete with Canada and, you know, other regions. So at the national level, it's going to take a policy change, a new paradigm that basically says, we understand, we're going to start a new direction in forest management policies, and to do that, we need to get started right away. And that's, again, that's bringing everybody together. I was raised by a marine, one of the best, a logger, one of the best, a lawman, the best. And, you know, he was a tremendous patriot, and he loved Oregon, and he had a tremendous appreciation for what we have here, and that has to be defended. That has to be fiercely protected. And it's going to take people like me that have lived here, that understand what we have, not just people that live here, but just the, the alternative is not good for the next generations, it's not good for our health, it's not good for our economic health. So here we are, time for a change, time for a new direction. It's going to take people that are fully committed and understand what is simply at stake and protect, protect what we have, protect the environment from really special management, and we're capable of that.
Okay.
Too long?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what I'm looking for, what needs to happen on the ground to protect our forest? And I'm looking for the three obvious, get rid of the fuel, get rid of the dead timber, get our forest healthy, or along the, you know, your own words to that effect.
Healthy forest, healthy communities, especially in Oregon. The fuel load, the carrying capacity of that fuel, it is... Um, it is, uh, it, it is growing so fast as long, as well as the trees. So we've got to manage that fuel. Uh, we have got to protect, uh, the, the whole, uh, in, in Europe, they grow small, really concentrated special forest. They don't lock off thousands of acres that are inaccessible to the public. Um, so in Oregon, we have to understand how fast it grows, uh, the, the quality it is, the fire danger. Um, and, and deal with it, deal with it. Uh, and there's, there's many ways to do that. Through, uh, through thinning, through prescribed burns, through, uh, wild horses. Uh, we've got to bring our deer populations back. A deer will eat seven pounds every day. That's what's happening in California. Uh, elk will eat 30 pounds a day, a wild horse native to North America will eat 40 pounds a day. That's how you keep that forest floor down, the grass and brush. That's the killing that lights our beautiful forest on fire. There's other ways. Uh, we, we just have to educate people and we have to understand, uh, and we can and we will.
Perfect. Good, good. Um, one other quick thought, talking with, um, Gary Millman yesterday. And, uh, he hadn't really dealt with, um, Forest Service on this kind of an issue before. And he'd been in Brookings for 10 years. And he said, one of the things that needed to be addressed. Was the fact that we get a new fire chief, uh, on incident commander in every two weeks. And they might come from Connecticut or Michigan. They have no idea what our forests are like or what our fires are like, particularly what the Chekko effect was like. They were totally surprised by that. Yet they were told by locals, this is coming. They ignored it. And he didn't say that, but I've been on too many project fires. And I've, I've heard these meetings and so I, I know what goes on. And, um, uh, what are your thoughts as far as, you mentioned it, you got in there and I'd love for you to dig deeper. We need to manage these things at the local level. State and even in, in many cases, the local, uh, ranger, uh, district ranger. You've got a lot more input, but they tend to be ignored. So you want to give that another, another shot?
Sure. Firefighting has become a big business and it's, it's raised some concerns. It's raised some suspicions even with local folks, no matter where. Where you, where you go, what fire you're on. And they rotate firefighting teams, the NEMO teams, the incident command people, um, nonstop. And you just, the local folks get just a little bit of confidence, just a little bit of connection, a little bit of trust. And then they leave and then the next group has to be retrained. I had one friend of mine, I don't know if this is accurate, say, well, then no, that way nobody ever has to take responsibility. We need somebody to take responsibility. We need somebody to say, okay. John Doe, the retired two years ago, we need him here now. Those people were ignored in my community. Those people that with tremendous firefighting background, that know the landscape, that know the roads, that know the backcountry, that know the wildlife. Uh, they were, they were not utilized very tragically and sad to say. So the local district ranger has a lot of authority and yet in this case, uh, too much authority because it was, it was monitored. Uh, early on and, uh, it, it wasn't hit aggressively. And, uh, the, the, the facts are really lining up on that. So as we go forward, the Forest Service is in, uh, a little bit of turmoil right now. And that's where the local folks can command the local state and, and county people, city people that can simply offer, you know, wise. Uh, wise outlooks on, uh, and first of all, we don't want any more fires. We don't want any more mega fires. And to do that, we've got to start immediately.
Perfect. Good. Anything else that you'd like to say? Ain't burning on the tip of your tongue.
Um, let me think a minute. Yeah. You know, we're, keep Oregon green. We're going to bring Smokey back. Our forests are part of our heritage. Our logging is part of our heritage. And we know that the old timers without the science we have nowadays, were not the perfect managers, but overall. They did reforest. They did have tree, uh, small seedling plantations. They didn't even want seedlings from. Douglas fir seedlings from Idaho or Washington. They wanted trees that were, were grown right here. And so they cared. It's just. Uh, it, it's just like salmon enhancement, you know, they knew that we couldn't keep taking salmon without replenishing. So it's, uh, we have a rich heritage and keep working green, bring Smokey Bear back, prevent forest fires. That's what we've got to teach our kids. We can't be locked into this scenario that we've got to live with wildfires. You bet firewising our communities is critical, but we're not going to accept that is going to come within our, it's just not the rural areas anymore. It's the suburban areas that are at risk. So, uh, everybody. There's a lot of people out there that, that have, that have researched this and understand there's a way to, there's a way to lower the odds of having those kinds of fires again. And Oregon doesn't have to accept that smoke and that danger and that loss of beautiful sacred timber.
One more quick question. They don't get out of your way, I promise.
You're fine.
Um, you just mentioned something that is kind of on the tip of the tongue. Talked with people all over the West, uh, last year. Everybody had smoke, a lot of it. Are there health ramifications from having so much smoke in communities for long extended periods of time?
We had, um, with the Chekko bar fire, we had 15 or 16 days where it was at least, uh, purple. Or on the, on the classification codes, black. And of course, if you get into the purple category, the doctors say you're better off not breathing. Long-term consequences, we know that in, in the tragedy of 911, there were thousands of New York folks that suffered greatly. And sometimes those consequence, consequences, excuse me, weren't known for years later. So we don't know what we're dealing with here. I was in the middle of that smoke for 14 straight days. Didn't bother me. I'm fortunate in that way, but I don't know with the long term. I had a Vietnam buddy that is a picture of health. It affected him for two weeks and one of his best friends passed. Um, I, I'm not here to, to make assumptions or to, uh, to, to overstate it. But I do know this, we weren't designed to breathe, to breathe smoke. Fish weren't designed to breathe ash water. So that's why managing our lands to prevent these mega fires, these catastrophic fires, these nuclear fires. Is something we have no choice but to do. And, uh, that's, yes, that's got to start at the local level, work all the way to the national level and ricochet back.
Uh, this is one of Jim's points, that he thinks that the way to really get people behind this is to take a look at the health issues. And we've already heard one study that has equated, um, a day's worth of fire smoke. Is like smoking a pack of cigarettes a day. And that there are plenty of carcinogenic, um, effects because of that. So, uh, any thoughts on that?
The, Mike, the, the, the amount of carbon that was released. I mean, we have the greatest carbon sequestration tools in the world in these beautiful trees. That hold the carbon almost indefinitely as long as, as long as the tree is alive. That's another reason the people I run with generally do not want, have no interest in harvesting old growth. Because they are holding that, uh, those carcinogens and the, the tremendous, uh, risk of, of, you know. It's just awful. And people in Oregon are realizing that, you know, this is a potential health issue. This is, this is legitimate. This is something that, that we have to deal with and cannot ignore. So the best way to do that is again, grow healthy forests. That timber, when it's healthy, holds that carbon. And that's something that we can brag about in this state and, uh, we're doing our part. We are absolutely doing our part.
And some, um, I'm working on who, but we want to, uh, interview some people, the Oregon Health Authority and whatnot. Who supposedly are making some, um, analogies between the amount of carbon released in these mega fires. And what that potentially is doing as far as climate change. Heard of anybody talking about that?
You know, that, that's, I think the climate change in some aspects is a little bit of a fad. Um, you know, I think we have to be aware and to the extent it might be accurate. Uh, if, if, you know, I'm not a climate denier, but the, the folks that are, are reasonably skeptical. Uh, they look at, um, they're basically saying, okay, if that, let's say that that is true. That even puts more of a, of a burden on us to properly manage and to control. Uh, and keep these in normal burn cycles. Nobody gets upset about a thousand acres here or, or 500 acres there. That is normal. That is the way nature set it up. Um, but the health risk of that smoke is just absolutely undeniable. You saw again what happened in New York. And those folks had to be compensated by the United States government, were compensated, thank goodness, for years and years. And a lot of them didn't make it. We just lost a fireman, uh, just the other day that, that had saved many, many people. But he breathed some awful smoke and we don't know, when, when that carbon is released, it, it releases a, a variety of different, uh, toxic things that are not good for kids, not good for seniors, not good for any of us. And so back to local control.
Perfect. Kurt, you're wonderful. That was just excellent.
Okay.
So we'll, it might take me a couple of weeks, so I'll get a written transcript of this too. And I'll shoot it back to you. And then once we decide what we're doing with all this stuff, uh, we'll let you know where, it's going to be on YouTube. So we'll have, uh, access to it and we'll have the address for it. So anything you can think of down the road. Did I give you a card?
No, sir.
Okay.
Let me do that. Let me think a minute. Um.
Let me know. Keep me in the loop because like I said, I've been working on these issues forever and, um.
Sure, I could say one more thing.
Okay.
I've been on a lot of radio stations. I do better when I'm just. So I'm pretty fortunate. I live in Little Community of Agnes, Oregon. And on the Illinois River, just about a mile up on the west side. And that's a river that is just one of the most pristine in North America. The Idaho folks certainly can, uh, challenge us on the quality and beauty and, and, uh, special parts of that river. I raised my family in the Rogue River Wilderness. Um, the twin sister to the Illinois, of course, is the Chetco. One goes down one side of the east-west ridge, the other goes down the other side of the east-west ridge. Some of the most, well, absolutely the most rugged part of North America, at least in the continental United States, is in southwest Oregon. And so these rivers are something that are so, uh, beautiful and sacred to us. And so to lose, um, it, it's just something that we have to fiercely defend and protect. And once again, we are capable of that. We're responsible to do that. Um, it is a connection that we all have here in this part of the state, uh, in this part of the country. Um, and so we're not going to give that up. We're not going to give that up.
Perfect. Perfect.